Keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sir.
It was west telephone there was ringing, it wasn't mine.
In Kiwanis, we fine people.
It'll be a dollar.
Quarter?
Quarter?
Yes, sir.
Please call or roll.
Commissioner Paragon?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Denning?
Here.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here, do we have any award or recognitions tonight?
No, sir.
Any comment, reward or recognitions? I want to welcome city manager Jeff Muzel to his first official meeting, glad for him to be here. Do you have any comments for us to deal with this evening?
Yeah, we'd like to take this time, Greg Meredith, our public works director, to discuss a potential new project with you that we are looking at. Greg? I didn't want to steal his thunder, so I'll let him present it.
Are we talking about?
Pre- pre qualification.
Oh, I'm sorry, the pre qualification, certainly. You all, hoping your packet, got the memo that Melissa and I put together in terms of selecting pre qualified contractors to do the work for the city. This issue has come up based upon a couple of things. First, it's the quantity of contracts that we're now trying to put out to meet the needs of a growing community. Second, to keep our costs down over the years, the number of public works inspectors and technicians is remained pretty much the same. I think we're working to remedy that as far as one position here in the budget this year. So with that, we thought, is there a way that we can ensure that the people who bid and provide low bids on our projects are actually qualified to do the work? So we looked around, again with the fact that I was with the KYTC, the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, they've got a method in place that looks at, early on, when a contractor proposes to do work and to bid for work for the state, that they go through a process that ensures that they have the qualified personnel, the right kind of equipment, and the right kind of experience to make those projects successful. Again, with the city, we don't have that pre qualification progress, uh, process, but we can piggyback on what the KYTC does. So we thought it made a lot of sense in certain projects, not every project, but certain projects, to make sure that we're getting the right kind of people to do the right kind of work. And with that, the memo goes into more detail. Again, we want to make sure that we're, that we're not incurring larger maintenance costs over the years because projects weren't done exactly the way they should have been done. And we don't have people to stay on the projects 24/7 while they're being built. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Questions from?
I just think it makes all the sense in the world. We encourage the citizens of Bowling Green to always use a licensed contractor, go through the license, the licensed contracting board to make sure that everything is done on the up and up. We should be doing the same thing. So that's, that's great, I'm glad we're doing this.
Do you have, do you mean that we're using the state's criteria? If they're qualified with the state, then they're pre qualified with us?
Yes, and it's for certain items of work. Not all contractors are qualified to do everything that we need. If it were a grade and drain, for example, a larger project like a small house road, there'd be asphalt producer qualifications. If it involved a traffic signal, they'd have to have the electrical traffic signal type qualifications. For a pouring sidewalk and concrete, it would be the concrete construction kind of qualification. So it varies based upon the project.
But again, we're not creating any new, we're just taking the state's list and those are the people that we will allow to, to work on it?
There's no cost to the contractors to get on this list. You know, it's a process, they have to submit certain information, but again, it's no cost and they're on the list and they can do not only work for us, but work for the KYTC if they're, they had projects of similar nature that, that came out for bid, so.
Is there anything about the process, clearly I want the most qualified people on the job, but is there anything about the process that would discourage a smaller business from being involved?
I mean, there could be, but if it's a smaller business, they probably don't need to bid on larger scale projects. So it's going to be the public works director, my discretion on which projects we think we need to invoke this pre qualification on. So it won't be every contract across the board because some are easier and involve less infrastructure to deliver that project on time or, you know, on budget. So we'll pick and choose which ones we ask them to do.
What is the appeals process if somebody feels like they're being left out?
Um, well, the, the, the appeal at that point is that we've made a determination based upon this, what, the makeup of this project, and we feel it's that important that we're going to require this. And so the, the appeal, there really is no appeal, they'd have to go ahead and become pre qualified. You know, if it's that much, if they feel like they really need to be a part of it, and we think that we really need to have somebody that can deliver, then it's up to them to show that they can deliver through that mechanism.
And it doesn't cost them anything, right?
It does not.
What if the contractor feels he can do the job and has the capacity, bonding capacity, can they still be eliminated, or can they still have an opportunity to bid?
Yeah, and it's, and it's not about necessarily just bonding, it's about experience, it's about, you know, the wherewithal, the kind of equipment that they need to bring to that, the kind of experience for their project managers. Again, so it's not just about bonding. That's an important component of, of how we, you know, make sure that contractors are performance bond type, that they can perform their work, but that's not the whole picture. We're looking at a more holistic picture of what we want the contractors to do.
And if I may, we're looking to, to start this new. We plan to put on our purchasing website the information of this new pre qualification requirement for certain projects and to go ahead and notify companies. We're also going to do a blast email to all the, the bidders that we currently have registered on our website to notify them of this new process and make sure they understand how they can go about getting pre qualified if they aren't already with the state. So we're, and we're also going to put an article in, or notice in the newspaper, so we're going to get the information out there before we actually implement it initially, but it, it's going to happen pretty quickly. We're going to get the information on our website, get an email out to all those pre-registered vendors that we have on our purchasing site, put a notice in the newspaper and do that pretty quickly if you all agree to it. And then we would follow up later on with a formal amendment to our purchasing policies. Once we've seen that, that this is working or not working, we kind of get a, an opportunity to lay it out, see if we do get some complaints, see what happens.
The other benefit to doing this is we see some efficiency on the side of the project managers where they're not having to go to that project every single day or two or three times a day to keep that close an eye on, on the project. If you've, you've got a qualified construction manager, construction company on that project, we, we feel like it's going to really help alleviate as much the stress and the work on the project managers that are having to make multiple trips to that same project every day just to keep an eye on it. So that's another benefit we think that will come from this.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Meredith. Is that the only thing you had, sir? Okay, next is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on May 1st, 2018, and the special meeting on May 8th, 2018.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams, is there any additions, solutions, or corrections? Please call or roll.
Arigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, second reading of ordinance BG 2018-22.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances, ordinance amending chapter 23, water and sewer of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordnances related to water and sewer rate adjustments as proposed by Bowling Green Municipal Utilities.
So moved.
Second.
By Williams, second by Nash, this is a second reading of really the title changes, word changes, and changing from gallon, I mean, from cubic feet to gallons in their measurement.
It's neutral to the consumer.
No, no costing increases. Any other comments? Please call or roll.
Arigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, second reading of ordinance BG 2018-23.
Ordinance renaming street, ordinance approving the renaming of old Louisville Road to River Street.
Moved. Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Arigen, second reading of something we discussed last time about helping the old Louisville Road area to find a way to redevelop and starting off with the name change of the street would be helpful in that. Any other comments or questions?
One.
Yes, sir.
Is there confusion when we say in Bowling Green, Old Louisville Road? Do we have more than one Old Louisville Road?
That old, old Louisville Road goes down to the College Street Bridge is what we always called it.
Right. I'm asking.
Ben, can you help us with that one? There's a little section in front of.
Do we have more than one Old Louisville Road?
Yes, sir.
Believe the answer is no, but I don't have the, obviously, the road list in front of me to know that for sure. I don't believe we do.
Okay, the College Street Bridge, uh, that was refurbished and everything, that in years past was called Old Louisville Road. When the Kentucky Street Bridge was built, uh, that was called Louisville Road. Now, the State Street Bridge, that one we're talking about now, is called Old Louisville Road. So we don't have two Old Louisville Roads?
It's a, what some people refer to as a spur that runs from the Old Louisville Road that we're talking about now. It runs from there to Low Avenue, I believe it is. That's also called a Louisville Road. We're not proposing to change that, and that's part of what we're hoping to fix here. So you'll have River Street from River View to Louisville Road there at Smokey Pig, that will be the new River Street. And then that Old Louisville Road spur, as we call it, over to Low Avenue will remain a Louisville Road. And that's the only evidence I have of any other Old Louisville Road. And I don't know if it shows that in the exhibit that you had from the first reading.
Thank you.
I'll look at on the map here, just a second.
Lifelong resident, you know, and, uh, old this and old that, Old Louisville Road. But my colleague here is going to show me on this picture what we're talking about. When I was growing up on Kentucky Street, there was an Old Louisville Road.
Okay, so we're talking about renaming this right here?
Mm-hmm.
That from right here.
Back to that.
To here.
Is Old Louisville Road.
Is Old Louisville Road, because they still call from the bridge on College Street.
Right.
So this would remain Old Louisville Road. That, that spur would remain Old Louisville Road, this would become River Road, all the way down to Smokey Pig. All the way down to here. Or to here.
I'm clear.
Any other questions, comments? Please call or roll.
Arigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2018-28?
Municipal order approving the.
Seventy-eight, seventy-eight, sorry.
Municipal order approving the career path advancement of C. Nicholas Henderson, Russell L. Smith, and Benjamin K. Wright to the position of operations technician one in the public works department.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams, Mr. Muzel.
Public Works Department has a career advancement program that we adopted back in 2006, and whereas new operations division employees are hired in as labors, and they can advance through the operations maintenance technician career ladder, depending on their achieving, achievements of certain job tasks, requirements, personnel, equipment operation, needs for the division that come up. And so we have three gentlemen here tonight, where one of them was unable to, to attend, Ben Wright, but Russell Smith and Nick Henderson are here tonight. This is, would be an operations technician one designation, which includes a commercial driver's license, EDL, and it's based on their satisfactory performance. And Russell and Nick are in the back here, and we are recommending, requesting your approval for this promotion.
Hey, hang on a minute, I think Joe has a comment for you.
Mayor, I, I know both of them.
And that, that affects your vote in a positive way, right? That affects your vote in a positive way, right?
I don't know about those two.
Congratulations, gentlemen, we're happy for you. Other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order 2018-79.
Municipal order approving the reappointment of Sarah Greis to the Bowling Green Municipal Utilities Board.
So moved.
Second.
By Williams, second by Denning, this is Ms. Greis' second term. I think they can serve up to two terms without having to roll off at that point, and we appreciate the work that she's done, happy to recommend that reappointment. Are there any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Arigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order 2018-80.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance for the purchase of bulletproof vests for the police department in the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Nash, Mr. Muzel.
This is a request for your permission to submit for a grant from the Department of Justice for money for bulletproof vests. I think we would get forty-one vests at a cost of eight, our cost would be eighteen four fifty of fifty percent match to purchase these vests. Nick Cook is here to answer any questions that you have.
Comments or questions? Call or roll.
Arigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, first reading of ordinance BG 2018-24.
Ordinance amending zoning ordinance, ordinance amending articles one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, and appendices A and B of the zoning ordinance for the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, as recommended by the City County Planning Commission.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams, this is a first reading, but we had a detailed explanation at the last meeting. If there's any further comments or questions that anybody developed in that period of time? Please call or roll.
Arigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, first reading of ordinance BG 2018-25.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning a portion of a tract of land containing five point eight seven acres from HB Highway Business to LI Light Industrial located on Nashville Road presently owned by JGL Properties LLC, care of Grant Lewis.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams, this is a first reading of a unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning for rezoning. Are there any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Arigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order 2018-81.
Municipal order approving the fiscal year 2019 stormwater mitigation program locations, including design and survey, and authorizing the city law department to negotiate the purchase of properties necessary for these projects, and further authorizing appropriate city officials to execute deeds, easements, and other documents related to land purchases necessary for the projects.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Paragon, Mr. Muzel.
This is public works recommendation for the FY19 stormwater mitigation projects. As you can see in the memo, we have four projects planned, first one being Kenton Street in the vicinity of Broadway and Thirteenth Avenue. Second one was the intersection of McCausland Avenue and Rodeo Lane, and then there was an intersection of Kenton Street with Fifteenth, and then we're planning on doing some ditch improvements between Potter and Eric Avenue. Melissa Kansler is here tonight, and I think Greg is here if you have any questions, Greg Meredith. These would be paid for out of the stormwater fund in the FY19 budget.
Comments or que? Please call or roll.
Arigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order 2018-82.
Municipal order adopting modern and accurate legal description of territory previously annexed by ordinance.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams, Mr. Muzel.
Next two items, number eighty-two and eighty-three are kind of similar, they're administrative cleanups. I think the state or someone stumbled upon some areas of our city that were not captured in the annexed areas. We're going through the process now, cleaning those up. I think one of these is out Scottsville Road, and the other one was in, I can't remember now, sorry. I want to say Briarwood, but I'm not sure. But there's several of these, we're kind of tackling them as we get them completed, but these are to help us with our census coming up in twenty twenty as well. I think there were some areas we probably missed out on in 2010 by them not being officially part of the city limits recorded at the state level. So we're trying to get these cleaned up and would ask for your approval.
Comments or questions? Please call, I'm sorry.
Do those residents currently get a tax bill from the city?
Yes.
They've been annexed. It's an issue with the way the descriptions were written about twenty, twenty-five years ago, and they can't map them correctly according to the new standards that were approved in two thousand four or fourteen legislation, I can't remember which. So we're just trying to update those descriptions, so it doesn't change the annexation, they were already annexed, these are already places within the city limits. It's just a mapping issue that we need to get updated with the state.
And want them to get a new bill and not?
Right, no.
No.
All right, please call or roll.
Arigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order 2018-83.
Municipal order adopting modern and accurate legal description of territory previously annexed by ordinance.
I'm moved. Second.
Paragon, second by Paragon, we heard the same explanation from the previous one, are there any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Arigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order 2018-84.
Municipal order approving amendments to the Community Action of Southern Kentucky Incorporated Public Transit Agreement and Agency Appropriation Agreement to increase the city's portion of the fiscal year 2018 public transit funding in the amount of seventy five thousand three hundred twenty dollars to provide matching funds for the Federal Transit Administration's funding.
Oof.
Second.
Nash, second by.
We got, we had a good discussion on this last meeting. Basically, the solution is that we fund an additional seventy-five thousand three twenty to allow community action to draw upon that FY18 operating money from the feds. We also, part of this, we're changing the in-kind donations to one hundred and thirty thousand for fuel, forty thousand for maintenance, and I believe that this kind of helps with their loss of what we, what they described as a loss of three hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred in, in-kind donations that they were not, not able to make up. We have, you'll see in the budget coming up here shortly that we have addressed this for the FY19 budget as well, but this would get them through the FY18 year and get those fifty percent match funds drawn from, from, for operating purposes.
Comments or que? Call or roll.
Arigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order 2018-85.
Municipal order approving and authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Commonwealth of Kentucky Finance and Administration Cabinet related to the Kentucky Wired Network Project.
I'm moved. Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Nash, Mr. Muzel.
This is basically a project the state is doing for open access fiber optic network. I'm going to let Gene explain, he's worked on this, what the details are to it.
Well, I think everybody's followed this one through the years, the state's appropriated money for the, basically to provide high speed fiber throughout the state. It's, the project's been ongoing, I think the general assembly put money in this time, additional money in this time as well. I think right now, I'm not sure if they're here, but right now, I think they're in the east, kind of southeastern part of the state. The plans are to go statewide. Since it will be coming to Bowling Green here in the next few months, they worked with BG and Mew and got poll attachment agreements with them, but they still need approval from us to be in our rights of way. Since it's a state, we can't require them to get a franchise agreement, but we did work out a memorandum of understanding. Basically, it's a ten-year agreement, and the main thing from our point of view is it sets out that they will comply with all of our public works requirements about cuts in the streets and maintain our streets and stuff like that. That was the main reason why I think, in particular, the state, we wanted the agreement, to make sure that we did protect our streets.
Did receive a phone call from Mr. Hayden shortly before the meeting started, and he got caught in the I-65, or the wreck on I-65, got caught in that traffic jam, and was still going to try to make it, but I don't see him here yet, so if he comes in, I'll be sure recognize him. Any other comments? Please call or roll.
Arigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, next item we have is a presentation of our annual operating budget for this upcoming fiscal year.
All right, it's that time of year again where we, tis the season for budget, so I'm going to give an overview real quick, I'll try to be as brief as possible, we're going to have a, a, kind of a tag team approach as we usually do, but first of all, I'd like to thank all the department heads and division managers and all of our employees that worked on this, on their departmental budgets, which form the foundation of this budget that we, we have before you today, it's the starting point. Also want to thank Katie, she's stepped out for a few seconds, but want to thank Katie for overseeing the entire budget process, and, and as well as the rest of our budget team, Aaron Blue, Sean Weeks, and Mike Grubbs, and myself. What they did is they, they did most of the compiling and assembling of what you see today. So the FY19 budget is going to present to you a balanced general fund budget and a balanced budget in most of the other funds. You'll see a few cases where there are some capital funds that are using some cash reserves that we built up in prior years for, for projects, so you'll see maybe expenditures exceeding the revenues in some of those funds, but it's all covered with those fund balances with those project funds.
Muzel, can I interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
I think Mr. Hayden just came in, if we just give him an opportunity, if you, we just handled your, your project, if there's anything that you'd like to add, and I know that you've got a long drive back when you get done, so.
Well, once you get halfway here, you might as well keep coming. Yeah, Philip Brown, executive director of, executive director of the Kentucky Communications Network Authority. I've always been told that once you've gotten a yes, you should stop negotiating, but be happy to answer any questions in general about the project. I know that a lot of ink has been spilled about it, lots been said, always happy to, to chat with it, but also know that he was in the middle of a presentation, I hate to, hate to do that to somebody. You know, happy to be here, sorry about the, sorry about the lateness, but as I just You know, happy to be here. Sorry about the, sorry about the lateness, but as I just said, I've never reversed a mile down the interstate like I did about an hour ago. So it was definitely something that startled up a lot of people.
Is there anything in particular about this project in Bowling Green that we should be aware of?
Well, you know, certainly we're serving sites here in Bowling Green, Western Kentucky in particular, the university, as well as all the state government agencies. Happy to be able to reach this MOU with the city, get a poll attachment agreement with Bowling Green Municipal to use their infrastructure to help expand our network. The project is statewide. It's intended to touch every county. Every delay, you know, everything that holds us up at this point just costs the project more money and thus the taxpayers. I stepped into this role about a year ago and really the goal, the whole intent is removing barriers to construction so that we don't cost, cause the project to be any more expensive than it already is. And so, you know, this is a positive step to, to get, you know, this is a milestone as far as the project in Bowling Green. Definitely need it. And, and the project is one that, if it did one thing well when it was put together, made it too expensive to stop. So we really do need to finish the project and I'm trying to make that happen as fast as possible as well as my agency.
Be operating similar as a wholesaler and then you'll be tending on retailers to go house to house?
That's correct. That's correct. We won't be providing any last mile service at all. We'll be providing direct service to state government agencies. And then beyond that, anyone that comes in and wants to lease access to our middle mile network to expand their network, they will be doing that. You know, they, for instance, might need to get a franchise with the city to operate here. You know, that would, that, we won't be involved in a, in a directly competing with any of the last mile providers here in the city or the county.
Questions or comments?
I'm Gene Hartman. I think I'll talk to you. Do you have a tentative date when you'll be here in Bowling Green, Warren County? Is it like, last I heard, like 2020 maybe?
That's, that's final completion of the network. That's all of the laterals, which are spurs off of the main part to get into every county and for make sure we get to all of our state government sites. So that's final completion. I think sometime in 2019 is when you'll start to see the trucks here doing, doing a middle mile, sort of the backbone construction for the network. You know, I, I think if, if we can find a four or five mile stretch that is open and ready to build, our contractors might come down early just to do that. We'd like to do this sequentially because it's more efficient, but if we have an open stretch of, of poles where we can do a full reel of fiber, we're going to do that and take advantage of the opportunity.
I know it may be too early to ask, but have you been in negotiations with any last mile providers? Of note that, because I know consumers are going to be interested in knowing who they might be able to contact at some point in the future.
Sure. It's a little early. There has been some early interest from the last mile community about what our, what's our, what our capacity is going to be, what our pricing might be. Until we get to the point, or the wholesaler gets to the point where they start to set some prices, it's a little early to talk about who might be leasing from us. It's potential business, but some large providers and small providers both have, have inquired. So I'm hopeful it's going to help last mile. I do know that we have third-party agreements with some existing Kentucky broadband providers that are building part of the network for us. As part of that build, I know that at least one of them has expanded fiber to the home here in Warren County as a result of doing work for us. So, you know, we, we are, we are causing a positive impact already. I look for the bright spots wherever I can get them. You know, with a 3,200-mile-long construction project, it's complex and, and there are a lot of moving pieces and some variables that we just can't control. So anytime I can, I can, I can find a bright spot, I usually hold on to it.
Comments or questions?
Thanks again.
Thank you for coming in. Sorry you got caught up in the traffic jam.
Happens.
Mr. Mizel, I'm sorry to interrupt your presentation. I know you're just getting started there. Go ahead.
Okay, so in this budget, there are no tax rate increases for property taxes or occupational taxes proposed. As you'll see later, revenues continue to remain stable and reliable and we're basing this revenue on that. As in the past, we have based our revenue budget on realistic and attainable funding levels while continuing to contain our operating costs as much as possible, which gives us more funding for capital. During my last 16 years here as treasurer and CFO, there were two years where we did not meet budget on the revenue side and I missed terribly. One, one year we were 3.5 million short. Another year we were 2.4 million short. That was in FY08. FY09, of course, that was the beginning of the recession. But I learned from my mistakes and since FY10, we've, we've taken this other approach where we're a little more realistic. Sean helps me with keeping, being real and sticking to reality, being a little more conservative with our forecast. And so again, we've taken that same approach this year for FY19 that will be covered here just in a few minutes. The other thing I'd like to point out to you though in this budget is that in the general fund operating budget for expenditures, you'll see the 74 million, but of that 74 million, only 62 million of that is for operating expenditures. And that's only a 4% growth over last year and 2.4 million, and $2.4 million increase, which is basically our operating, what I call our operating footprint. So we take that 74 million in revenues that we're projecting general fund and we, then we have that 62 million of operating and we use that difference, as you'll, you'll see here in a few minutes, for, for the operating or the, I'm sorry, for the capital projects that we have planned. The amazing part of this is though, in that 62 million, that also includes personnel. And there was a $3.6 million increase in personnel due to the CERS employer rate increase. And then you'll also see where we have decided to put another additional million dollars aside for the 30-year amortization that, that CERS is planning to put on all cities and counties to pay off the unfunded liability on, on the pension for CERS. So we took advantage of the, the 12% cap that you saw last minute that happened in the General Assembly. We use that as an opportunity for setting aside this extra million dollars that we'll use to pay towards that, that long-term 30-year amortization. Back to the tax rates, the last time we increased the real estate tax was in 2004. So we've gone, what is that, 14 years with not increasing the tax rate? We did, since 2004, there was a couple of years we had to back off of it because of the 4% cap on, on the growth. But we have been at the .206 rate since 2008. And again, not recommending any change to that. This would be the 11th year at that same real estate rate, real estate property tax rate. Same thing for occupational tax. We, we did increase it in 2003 to the 2%, then we backed it down to the 1.85% in 2007 where it currently remains. And with the occupational tax being 72% of our general fund revenue budget, we have to stay focused on jobs. So we again are focusing on job growth with the Job Development Incentive Program, which just met earlier today. We continue to get good projects in and we'll continue to award those incentives to, to bring jobs here and, and help companies to expand. Since '06, we've, we have incentivized over 3,500 jobs with this program. Also in the budget this year coming up, we continue to, we're going to plan to continue the neighborhood improvement program using the CDBG funding as well as funding for the street overlay with, using the liquid fuel tax fund and the general fund. We've got the, the same funding in there for sidewalks, stormwater. We've got some traffic flow improvements planned that Mike will discuss here in a few minutes. We've also got some additional funding included for the completion of Fountain Square Park and the streetscaping. We have planned to go in along State and College. And we also have a couple of projects in the budget for police and fire that Mike will also cover. I don't want to steal his thunder, but I will mention for the fire project that we have planned, which is the Lover's Lane Station. What we have in this year's budget is a $3 million transfer from the general fund over to a fire capital fund. We, we talked about paying for fire trucks several months ago. We looked into paying cash with those. And at the time, we would have had to hit fund balance to pay for those fire trucks, the 3.5. But we have carved out in this year, this coming year budget, out of the operating, we've carved out $3 million for, as a transfer out from the general fund over to the capital fund for the construction of the, the fire station. This is to avoid the issuance of any debt, bonds, or notes. And the plan is, is once the station is built, we think around FY20, the Fire Improvement Fund by that time would have the capacity to cover a payback to the general fund around the amount of $300,000 or so for probably 10 years. We could probably stretch it out to 15 if we had to, but the plan is for the Fire Improvement Fund to pay back the general fund like as, as it is, as would be a note or a loan. So that is, you'll see that as part of the general fund transfers out. In closing, I just want to say that this budget covers all of our existing obligations plus provides some release, relief for the increase in demand for services that we're going to, we're anticipating with the growth that's going on through the addition of some police officers, funding for an additional fire station and the personnel that goes with it, various road projects that will alleviate traffic congestion, additional parks, facilities to enhance quality of life, as well as the usual capital expenditures that we try to get back to the community such as the paving, the new sidewalks, the stormwater mitigation, everything that's necessary for a fast-growing and vibrant city. So with all this being said, I want to turn this over to my team. Sean will step up and present the revenue budget slides. Katie will follow with the expenditure slides. Aaron will, will present the information on the status of our outstanding debt and our debt service budget along with some projections for our fund balance. Then Mike will cover our personnel sections and our capital improvement program. And then finally, Katie will return to the mic to close out and recommend, and make her, make the rep, can't talk, recommendations for agency fundings. And so feel free to interrupt, interrupt as you have questions. We don't mind the interruption while we're on the topic. If you have any questions about anything, then I will turn it over to Sean Weeks.
Thanks, Jeff. Mayor and Commissioners, before we get into the numbers, Jeff talked a little bit about this to you further. I'm going to talk on the revenue budget for FY19. We took a conservative approach again. This helps us with setting the expense budget. It provides us a little bit of margin of error during the, error during the year. And also if we have anything remaining, if we go above and beyond the revenue budget at the end of the year, we can take that and move it to capital for pre-funding through possible excess. We typically base the revenue on nine months of actual revenue that is then projected out for the final three months. Essentially, this is where we feel we will finish the year out plus any possible sustainable growth for the year. This, this chart here kind of gives you the total for all funds for both revenue expenditures. I'm going to focus on the revenue piece. The revenue in all funds is just a tick over $125 million. It's a 4.2% increase over the FY18 budget of $120.1 million. The general fund revenue, including golf and aquatics, comes in north of $74 million or 6.6% increase versus FY18. I'll speak on these particulars in a minute, but the main drivers are both occupational taxes and property taxes. I do want to note, and again Jeff touched on this, that the negative shown on this page is not deficit spending at all, but funds earmarked for capital projects both now and in the future. This chart here kind of talks about all funds revenue by type. So kind of, kind of a breakdown of what all these represent. So related to taxes is property taxes, insurance premium taxes in the Fire Improvement Fund. Occupational fees are for all the general fund, Parks Improvement Fund, Job Development Fund. The license and permit refers to building, plan review, and electrical permits. Intergovernmental are grants across multiple funds such as the Transit, Section 8, Community Development Block Grant Fund, Liquid Fuel, and others. The fees, the majority of those are for the WKU reimbursement for the Dill Arena Bonds. We've never been out any funds since we are reimbursed for those costs. The charges for services, the majority of that is from our fleet leases where the fleet division charges each individual department for the services that the fleet department provides for those vehicles. Also included in the charge for services are cemetery revenues. The Parks and Rec, of course, is general parks and then golf and aquatics. Under miscellaneous, we have health insurance premiums, interest earnings, police and fire pensions, pension earnings, rental income, and contributions and donations. The transfer in relates to the debt and capital transfers to those particular funds throughout the year. The next slide just kind of gives you a feel for the breakdown of each individual revenue drivers within both all funds and the general fund. Under all funds, occupational fees represent 45.1% of all funds. Transfers in is second at 17.8% with taxes at 15.3%. Within the general fund, occupational fees jumps up, which is withholdings and net profits, jumps up to 72.1% of all revenues within the general fund with property taxes, insurance premium taxes being second at 20.9%. Which you'll see there if I click my button. This chart here is a seven-year history of the adopted revenues within the general fund. In 2013, we had continued growth out of the recession. In 2015, you see a little bit of a jump there. That's when we added golf and aquatics to the general fund itself. But then 15 through 19, it's just nice steady growth through 2019 that we are projecting. 2019 is an adjustment to the growth that we are already currently seeing right now. However, our projections are still with a, a conservative eye towards future growth. This is a 10-year analysis of general fund revenue actuals. As you know, and from '09 to '11, this shows the effect of the recession on city finances with 2011 being the low point of that. Starting in 2012, we've seen a continued growth with an average increase of actual revenues of 5.5% during that time. We project FY18 to finish near $72.3 million with 51.4 or 71.1% of the total to come from occupational fees. As you'll see in your chart, excuse me. About that. As you see in your chart, your orange piece will be all revenue and then occupational will be that proportion in the blue. I'm going to get a little bit into the detail here. Our budget for total property taxes reflects a growth of 2.9%. This includes real property taxes, personal, motor vehicle, and franchise. The increase for real and personal property taxes references, refers to a preliminary assessment from the PVA. Incorporated in there are new builds that are added to the tax roll and reassessments that, which over a period of five years, each property will have that reassessment. So that's also included in there. Under the other taxes column, the increased portion of that relates to the insurance premium tax within the general fund and bank franchise taxes for that small growth. And then also included is telecommunications franchise tax, which remains flat. There's no growth projected. Our next slide talking about occupational fees, which are withholding fees and net profits. The budget increase reflects an 8.2% increase over FY18 adopted budget with 3.8% increase over projected 18 estimates, staying conservative that way with FY19 budget. This is, this $4 million-plus increase is an adjustment to reality. We're actual growth that we are currently experiencing. Over the last 10 years, we've had 5.4% growth on average. Within five years, we've had 5.6% growth and over the last three years, 5.2. So we've been pretty consistent. I think this is a testament to the city as a desirable location for new and expanded businesses. Next slide here, we talk about license and permits and grants. Again, license and permits include building, electrical, and plan review permits as well as the alcohol business license. FY17, we saw a slight dip from FY16 due to large project permits in FY16. But in FY17, we're projecting it to finish $141,000 over that FY17. So with it, for FY19, we're going to go ahead and project a 6.6% increase due to continued real estate and commercial project growth. Under the grants portion, this is simply just a reimbursement that we received from the county for two pieces of debt, which are the depot debt and the Lover's Lane Soccer Complex, their portion of that debt. All other grants are in special revenue funds. Next, we're going to talk about charges for services and Parks and Rec. For charges for services, that relates to cemetery receipts and the school tax collection fees. The small $57,000 K increase relates primarily to the school property tax collection of which we receive a 2% fee for collecting those for the school. Parks and Rec, general parks like community centers and athletic leagues, et cetera. You also have golf and aquatics in there. This adjustment of roughly 40, I'm sorry, $87,000 allows the budget to be reflective of our current revenue position. For miscellaneous and transfers in, under miscellaneous revenues, there's a wide variety of revenues under that. We have interest, rental income, sale of equipment primarily through our GovDeals program, also parking tickets, contributions, donations, judgments, and settlements with an overall 2.2% growth from FY18. The transfers in portion refers to the golf piece, portion of the Heartland Tax and District revenues that is, are distributed back to the golf fund. So in this last slide here, it's kind of similar to that all funds one that we saw earlier. This is general fund revenues by type, kind of goes over a lot of the percentage change that I've already gone over. So to recap, we're projecting a 6.6% increase over the FY18 adopted budget for the general fund. This brings the city in line with current. This brings the city in line with current growth fueled by occupational tax receipts and property taxes. Do you guys have any questions? What's that? Thank you. If not, I'll turn it over to Katie Schaller Ward to speak on expenditures.
Good afternoon. Get myself organized. Okay. As we turn our focus now on to the expenditure side of the budget, we do propose to use just under $2.6 million of previously saved money to balance the all funds expenditure budget. And this is primarily for capital purchases and projects that are going to be described later on in the presentation. This is the fifth consecutive year that we do not propose to use any fund balance for general fund to balance the budget. And the FY18 adjusted expenditure budget includes carryovers for capital projects and open POs from the previous year. We will likely not finish at $73 million, but less than that. This is sort of a summary of our all funds expenditure budget. And when you're comparing the FY19 all funds recommended budget to the FY18 adopted budget, total expenses will be up by 4.5% or just under $5.5 million. The increase in personnel will be discussed later in the presentation. Mr. Mizel's already briefed a little bit of that. The increase in contractual services and supplies is attributed to proposed capital projects and purchases for FY19. The decrease in subsidies is due to the FY18 being the last year of a payment to the ITA for infrastructure improvements. Back about five years ago, they had sold some property, I think it was about $2.1 million of payment that they received. We used that to pay down the principal on the debt. And in exchange, the city and the county agreed to provide the difference in that debt payment that we no longer needed to pay forward, give that back to the ITA for infrastructure improvements. That ended in fiscal year 18, so the majority of that decrease is due to that. In addition, there's an expected decrease in the TIF revenues from some block changes in 2015 and 2016. So we're just trying to reevaluate those as well. The decrease in property and fixed assets is directly related to the FY18 capital purchases for the fire trucks. That was over $3 million. And then we have fewer equipment and vehicle replacements proposed for FY19 because we have gotten to the point where we're finally getting caught up in that purchasing process. The decrease in debt service relates to the retirement of the 2013 geo bond refunding, the general obligation refunding bonds. And then the other refinancing that we've done through the last few years, we're finally reaping some of those benefits as well. Even adding the fire improvement fund debt payment for next year, will start next year for the new fire trucks, we're still coming in less in our debt all fund service than the previous year. The increase in transfers out can be attributed to proposed capital projects for fiscal year 19. One of the points I'd like to make, and I think Mr. Mizel also made, was excluding capital items, the all funds operating budget is up by 2.8%. That's 2.6 million. 2.4 million of that is general fund. So the other 200,000 is made up in some other funds that we have. We've got some additional housing fund coming from some housing choice voucher changes, where we receive some additional vouchers for the veterans and some other expenditures there. We've got supplemental pay with police and fire, where they get money from the state. We have to provide a small portion of that, plus we've added some additional police and fire positions. So there's an increase there. The fire improvement fund is also showing an increase in operating costs related to some new positions for the new fire station. And that's for their equipment, not for the personnel costs specifically, but in fire improvement fund. Parks Development Fund is also showing an increase because of the additional revenues from the tax increment district. And then Workers' Comp Fund is showing an increase as well. So that's basically what makes up that $200,000 all funds change. When you're comparing on this pie chart, as you can see, public safety expenditures make up 27.5% of the all funds budget. The other departments combined, when you're looking at Parks and Recreation, Public Works, our General Government, and Neighborhood and Community Services make up 42.1%. And then the remaining elements, such as transfers out, debt service, contingency, intergovernmental, and agency services make up 30.4%. In the general fund pie chart, public safety represents 37.4%. The other departments combined represent 34%. Transfers out, which includes the general fund debt expenses, is 23.3%. And then the rest of the remaining elements round out the pie chart at 5.3%. Obviously, this particular chart is equal to what we have on the revenue side because we balance our general fund revenues to expenditures. This graph reflects the total adopted budget amounts for the past few years. The spike in FY15 is, as previously mentioned, the incorporation of the golf and aquatics funds into the general fund. The incline from FY16 to FY19 is obviously mostly reflective of the city's capital improvement program because as we have more funds for capital projects available, we're addressing that we're recommending that we use those funds. Since the general fund accounts for 58% of the all funds budget, a more detailed review of those changes are to come. As the budget expenditure budget is prepared, and I've mentioned this over the past several years, we take into consideration historical trends, actual needs, and other factors to determine the most appropriate cost for all of our services. And we cut budgets, and all the departments know. I go to them and say, just because you got this last year doesn't mean you're going to get it again this year. So we do cut budgets, and we look at where we're spending money, and we extract savings wherever we can. And when you take into account the projected revenues as previously presented, the FY19 recommended budget covers all operating costs and proposes to include almost $12 million in new and future capital and projects and purchases without impacting fund balance. Again, repeating what Mr. Mizel previously reported.
I wasn't just making that up, so.
With personnel expenses making up over half of the general fund budget, 55.6%, this chart reflects how modest the actual increases have been over the past 10 years compared to the actual total expenses. So these are total actual expenditures. The purple bar, the smaller shorter bar, is personnel expenses, and the taller orange bar is total expenditures. And you can see that our personnel has remained relatively flat through the years. We've held these personnel costs in check despite providing cost of living and step adjustments, increasing retirement contributions, and overfilling or overhiring in our police officer and firefighter positions anticipating future retirements. This has been accomplished through natural attrition and by examining every job vacancy to determine if still valid. We've combined jobs, we've retooled some positions from full-time to part-time, we've eliminated positions when it was feasible, and we've held non-public safety positions vacant for a period of time before filling. We have continued to do that process. That was obviously the former city manager's process that we have followed. And within this budget process, we're looking forward to doing the same, continuing that already established procedure. As I previously mentioned, with personnel being the largest expense type, this chart breaks down the various components and reflects a total increase of 7.5% for the fiscal year 19 compared to the fiscal year 18 adopted budget. The other personnel costs identified on that chart include medical, dental, vision, life insurance, workers' comp, and unemployment expenses. And then the total other benefits included on that chart relates to tuition reimbursement, cell phone stipends, and an EMT recertification reimbursement. Additional details about these changes will be presented separately by Mr. Grubbs in just a few minutes. One thing I want to go back and point out, the CERS and CERS hazardous, you'll see an increase of 14.8% for CERS and 15.7% for CERS hazardous. Again, it's a 12% rate cap increase, but this is the impact on the actual expenditure cost in the budget process. Despite operating expense increases in utilities and other program areas, the decrease in contractuals and supplies is primarily from the FY18 capital expenses not being repeated in the fiscal year 19 budget. We had replacement of the playgrounds at Covington Woods Park and Lampkin Park in the general fund line item budget this last year. Both of those were well over $135,000. So those have been removed, and we didn't repeat those changes again this year. So obviously, there were some increases and decreases throughout all of those expenditures, but because of capital projects last year in the general fund line items, that basically reflects a 5.1% decrease over $500,000. That's not in the contractual service lines for next year. Or in the supply lines for next year. And the increase in fixed assets is again related to capital equipment purchases, and this is for the police department for a crime scene processing equipment replacement. Subsidies and assistance, the decrease there is primarily due to an expected decline in the TIF revenues, as I've previously mentioned, in block changes from 2015 and 16. And we do not need to provide a contribution to the closed police and firefighters retirement fund in the next fiscal year because that fund is over 100% funded to date. That fund will have an actuarial study annually, is that correct? So we will reconfirm that obviously when we get that actuarial study returned. But at this point, we do not anticipate needing to provide a contribution for next year. And in fact, we did not actually need to provide the contribution for FY18. We had budgeted for it, but we'll just extract that money as savings at the end of the year. The amount of funds set aside to cover unforeseen expenses, which we refer to as contingency, and that's in the miscellaneous line item. These unforeseen expenses during the year happen, you can't stop them. They just out of nowhere will come up. But what we try to do is have our contingency account be approximately 1% of our total general fund budget. It's a little less than 1%, but we do try to keep that in line so that again, we have money available if some last-minute things come up or some Dishman Lane road collapse happens, we've got money to take care of these things. The increase in transfers out is directly related to the proposed capital improvement program and very specifically related to, as Mr. Mizel reported earlier, the $3 million that we are basically loaning to the fire improvement fund for the new fire station. The general fund operating budget excluding capital, again, removing all capital expenses for fiscal year 2019, the general fund operating budget reflects a 2.4% increase or only a 4% total increase. This increase is attributed to the proposed personnel changes, cost of living and step adjustments to wages, the CERS rate increases, future pension obligations, as well as other proposed changes in personnel costs, all of which will be presented in more detail in just a few minutes. I'd like to now turn the presentation over to Erin Baloo, and she will outline the debt service requirements, projected fund balance, and summarize the total recommended expenditure budget for fiscal year 2019.
Good afternoon. I'll start with debt. This slide identifies the debt funded by the general fund only. Payments made by any city special revenue funds like the fire improvement fund or payments provided by outside entities like WKU or Warren County are excluded from this chart. The FY18 estimated actual column includes one payoff, one final payment for the Series 2013 A refinancing that Katie mentioned earlier. The total expected expense for debt service in the general fund is about 5.4 million this fiscal year, and that's 7.8% of the general fund total spend. Last fiscal year, that ratio was 8.7% in FY17, and in FY16, that was 9.3%. So you can see that downward trend of the general fund paying for debt service. And that will continue into FY19 when it will be 6.9%. In FY19, we are recommending that the budget be about $5.1 million in the general fund for debt service. That's a one-year savings of about $300,000 just in the general fund for debt. The FY19 budget again includes no new general fund debt, and none has been issued from the general fund since 2008. As you know, we did issue debt this fiscal year, but that was through the fire improvement fund for the purchase of the six new fire trucks. So the general fund will not provide any funding for that debt issuance, for that lease that we entered into this year. With the exception of the ballpark debt on this slide, all of this will be paid off and fully retired by 2033. So within 15 years, all this debt will be retired except the ballpark. And that will be retired in 2038. So in 20 years, none of this will be outstanding. Yes, uh-huh. This slide summarizes the total city debt service. The prior slide just spoke to the general fund debt service that's covered in the general fund. So you can see for FY19, the total debt service that the entire city will need to pay is $11.8 million. The general fund we just saw was 5.1 million of that, and that's 43% of the pie. The next largest slice are reimbursements from Western and Warren County. This is about 32.7% of the total debt service, or $3.9 million next year. Our special revenue funds, which includes the fire improvement fund and job development fund, will contribute $2.1 million for debt service, and that's 18.1% next year. And that does include the first payment for the fire truck lease. And finally, the convention center contributes 6.2 or pays 6.2% of the city's debt service. This is $740,000 in FY19, and this is actually the final year for that.
Question on debt. WKU conduit that we are, when does that run out?
Believe that is 20...
26 or 27. It's not much longer. Something like that. I think it was a 25-year bond issued in 2002, so I think it's around 27, I'm thinking. Oh, sorry, 26.
That was the... I got it, I got it, thank you.
Okay, this next slide shows the city's outstanding debt history, which includes both the governmental and the convention center enterprise debt. You can see, and you guys all know, that we peaked in FY09 with over $148 million in outstanding debt. Now, we are estimating through the end of FY18 through June that that outstanding debt for the city will be only 82.4 million dollars from the high of 148. That's a decrease of almost $66 million in 10 years, or 44.4%. So essentially, we've decreased our debt almost 50% in 10 years. We've done that by making our regularly scheduled debt service principal payments. We avoided issuing any new bonded debt. We've issued the capital lease, but no new bonded debt since 2008. And we have taken advantage of retiring debt along the way early when possible. Okay, moving on to fund balance. The FY19 general fund balance estimate is here, sorry. The fund balance is defined as the remaining equity balance after all budget expenditures have been made. So this is the money we have left over. The FY19 beginning fund balance is estimated to be $25.4 million. And we got to that number through staff projections of revenue and expenditures that'll be made for the final six weeks of the year through June. The larger number, the $18.5 million that you see on the committed fund balance line, that is a reserve balance equal to 25% of the recommended FY19 general fund revenue budget. And that's actually an increase of $1.1 million over our current committed fund balance level. As you can recall, two years ago with FY17 budget, that reserve fund was increased to 25% from 20%. We did that a couple of years ago to help mitigate any volatility with the occupational wage tax collection and to help maintain the city's credit rating. The assigned fund balance of $3 million, that is there to show our estimate of open purchase orders that will not be completed at June 30th, and any unfinished larger projects that are unfinished at June 30th. That will roll over into FY19. You can see here, there is no use of fund balance, as been mentioned earlier, in the general fund. The last time we used fund balance in the general fund was in FY14 during the budget process. The unassigned fund balance of three point eight million dollars will be available for use during FY nineteen for any unexpected things that may come up, such as a major purchase, any infrastructure repairs, or any other significant events that we're not aware of now. This slide shows a comparison of the general fund expenditures by type for the FY eighteen adopted versus the FY nineteen recommended. Again, you'll see our expenditure budget is recommended to increase by six point six percent. And this also matches, as Sean said earlier, the revenue increase in the general fund. This is primarily found in two categories, the Personnel category and the Miscellaneous Transfer Out category. As you heard earlier, the Personnel category includes not only the COLAs and step increases, but also a new million-dollar budget item for the CERS unfunded liability that we're planning for. And also mentioned earlier, the Transfer Out accounts, that increase in the Transfer Out Miscellaneous category is for increased transfers to capital projects, and most notably, that is for the construction of the new fire station next year, beginning the construction of a new station. Okay, and this slide shows the two pie charts comparing FY nineteen expenditures in the general fund and in all funds. You can see both of these pie charts, the largest slice by far is Personnel Services. In the general fund, FY nineteen, that's fifty-five point six percent. Last year, this current fiscal year, FY eighteen, that was fifty-five point one percent. So a small half a percent increase. In all funds, Personnel Services in FY nineteen is recommended to be thirty-five point one percent. And in FY eighteen, that was thirty-four point nine. So it's just two tenths of a percent increase. And to consider that we are including that extra million dollars and all of the planned personnel items that Mike will speak to in a second, it's good to see that our personnel costs are relatively flat year to year when we compare it to all expenditures. Okay, Mike will step up next, and he is going to discuss Personnel and Capital Improvement Program.
Thank you, Erin. Good afternoon. I get the fun part to tell you how we're going to spend the money. First of all, we'll cover Personnel Services, providing the recommendations that are in the budget pertaining to wages, benefits, classification, and also workforce complement. The total impact in the budget for this coming year for the general fund is three point six million, and for all funds is three point eight million. That includes our raises for full-time, part-time, and seasonal employees, our recommendations for new personnel, new positions, as reference the CERS rate increase and also the unfunded liability, and also the city's share of the medical plan premium. This chart, which we've showed earlier, again, compares our largest revenue source, which is the occupational license fee, to our personnel costs. The reason for showing it again is, if you notice, in fiscal year two thousand and ten, there was about a three million dollar difference between our highest, our largest revenue source and our largest expenditure. Compare it to next year, when we're recommending a budget that's going to have a difference of twelve point two million. So obviously, that means there's more money available, as it's been growing each year, but more money available for capital expenses as we've tried to keep our personnel costs relatively flat. We are recommending a cost of living adjustment in the new budget of two point one percent. City policy has been that where possible, we'll try to match the increase in the Consumer Price Index issued by the Department for Local Government. This chart shows a comparison for the last several years. Back in fiscal year two thousand and thirteen to fifteen, the CPI increase was relatively small, and the city actually gave a larger cost of living adjustment. This past year and this coming year, the CPI increase was two point one percent, and we're recommending that that be the COLA for our full-time employees. There's also notation regarding elected officials, that the state law and our city policy allow the elected officials to get the DLG COLA as well, with some provisions that if, for some reason, the city can't afford to give the full-time employees the DLG COLA, then the elected officials don't get it either. And in those other years where we gave more than the CPI, the elected officials only got the increase in the CPI. But this coming year, the elected officials would get the two point one percent. Then talking about the step or merit increases to move our employees very slowly up through the pay grade and give them something beyond the cost of living adjustment. This would be the seventh year where we've reinstated the step increase after the recession. Overall, the average across all of our pay grades would be about a one point two seven percent average increase, again, based on the pay schedule. There's a higher percentage increase based on where, if someone's at the lower end of their pay grade, as opposed to someone who's been in their position a long time. As an example, for the pay grade that firefighters and police officers are in, someone who will have been here one year, their step increase is going to be worth one point six four percent. The impact overall with full-time employees is going to be a one point five, one point five seven percent increase in wages. For part-time seasonal employees, we're recommending a two, a twenty-five cent increase, which is slightly more than an average of two point one percent, actually, two point one four. We will adjust the minimum and the maximum salaries in the part-time pay scale to match that. The lowest pay rate in our scale for part-time seasonal will be nine dollars and fifty cents an hour as of July one, if the budget's approved. That compares, obviously, very favorably to the minimum wage, which is seven and a quarter. And I've given you some examples here of what some of our positions will pay with that increase. Part-time seasonal employees who've been with us a year also receive a step increase of fifteen cents an hour, so potentially, they'd get forty cents an hour if they've been with us at least a year. Position changes or classification changes is what we call an upgrade or a reclassification. As if a position is changed, we feel that someone has taken on a higher level of responsibility, or we have some internal equity issues, or there's been a change in organizational structure, we'll recommend an upgrade. This year, we're not recommending any upgrades for full-time personnel. We do have a couple of part-time positions in the Fire Department that we're going, we would like to reallocate to administrative project coordinator positions at thirteen hours a week. Fire Department will save money by assigning certain duties to those personnel rather than calling in firefighters, working overtime. They've used that very successfully on their reaccreditation program. Question on that?
Excuse me?
We had part-time firefighters working for the airport when we had flights, but we're retaining two of those positions and changing them to what we're going to call a project coordinator, working part-time, no benefits, to help carry out some special projects for the department, rather than using sworn firefighters, paying them overtime or paying the higher pay rate to do that work. And the reaccreditation program they're going on is an example right now of how they've used that personnel. No, these are retired firefighters, so they have insurance through the retirement, but we're only going to be working them thirteen hours a week. So employees working those few hours don't have insurance with us. But they're retired. They're collecting a retirement check plus have state insurance. We are recommending fourteen new positions in this year's budget. Two more patrol officers. Of the last two fiscal years, we've added two positions each year to help address call service, call volume, also special event coverage to help reduce overtime. We're recommending a laborer too in Public Works to help with basic services. This is the third year of a three-year plan to increase our snow removal capacity so that we have a snowplow and an operator in each of the ten zones. So the budget also includes another snowplow. We're recommending a facilities coordinator to improve and better centralize our facility's maintenance activities. We presented a recommendation to the board at a special work session we had last September to start looking at a facilities division, which right now has one maintenance mechanic. We spend over three-quarters of a million dollars a year on facilities, maintenance, and repair, but we do not have any centralized function to manage that for the thirty-seven main facilities that we have. So this will be the first step in providing that facility coordination, handle bid specs for us, coordinate maintenance and mechanical services, evaluate project requests, follow up on emergency repairs, maintenance issues, coordinate our maintenance contracts, and also supervise any assigned personnel. Other positions recommended in environmental compliance. We've got a number of new federal regulations that have come into place that mandate a series of programs and actions that relate to stormwater permitting. We've got several projects that need to be completed by our two-man division or two-person division. And without the additional personnel, we're going to have to contract out work. In fact, one project alone that we would need to contract out will pay for this position for the first year. Then we also have a recommendation to hire nine firefighters in the next budget to help with the staffing of the Lover's Lane Station. Even though the station won't open until two thousand and twenty, we need time to ramp up the staffing. And in the meantime, can use that personnel to help cover minimum manning, cover time off. And as you know, we've applied for a grant, which potentially will help pay for most of the cost of personnel for the first three years. This chart shows how the workforce composition has changed over the last ten years. While we do have a significant number more employees now than we did in two thousand and ten, most of the full-time, all of the full-time growth has been in police and fire. Actually, even with the recommended additional three positions in the general fund, non-police-fire this coming year, we still will be down one person for other departments, non-public safety departments, compared to ten years ago in our full-time complement. We are up fifteen in the part-time seasonal, most of which has to do when we took over umpiring and scorekeeping for the old Bowling Green Athletic Association. So again, over ten years, most of our full-time, all of our full-time growth has been in the police and fire departments. Again, we've already had quite a bit of conversation on the CERS County Employee Retirement System, but this chart shows you the, how the rates have changed over the last ten years. The non-hazardous rate this coming year will actually be the highest. It will have been at twenty-one and a half percent. And hazardous, again, if we're charged an additional twelve percent in two thousand and twenty, the hazardous duty retirement rate will be at thirty-nine and a half percent. That would be the highest that it would ever be. Again, we have the mandated twelve percent increase this year, budgetary impact of almost seven hundred thousand dollars. As previously referenced, the unfunded liability we have to start planning for could cost us over two million dollars a year, starting in two thousand and twenty. And we've set aside one million dollars in this coming year's budget just to help prepare us for that potential eventuality. Talking about our medical plan, our fiscal year last year ended up within the budget, but we were up eleven percent over the previous year. We've had several high claimants that have impacted our claims over the past few years. Plus, we pay for stop-loss insurance. We cover all claims up to a certain limit, and then we pay for insurance to cover that. And we've had some major increases in that, but we've also been raising our deductible in order to keep our premium down. Also, the Affordable Care Act provisions have had an impact on our plan. Effective January one of seventeen, we had a modest increase in the employee premiums, plus we changed the Rxs, our prescription co-pays. Then effective January one of eighteen, in the handout, it says December one of eighteen, but it's actually January. We converted all the employees to one health risk assessment, I'm sorry, health reimbursement account plan where we have higher deductibles and co-pays. But we also provide an incentive that if employees or covered spouses go get their health risk assessment, we'll put money into their health reimbursement account. Looking at this year through March, our claims are actually down compared to last year, and the plan costs are down. We have, we did this past year, select the higher stop-loss deductible in order to reduce our insurance premium and control future costs. And we've seen the benefit of that. Talking to our consultant, our premium increase next year will only be eight percent, whereas we had budgeted originally a fifty percent increase. So we definitely are saving money by having taken that action. Next year's budget is essentially no growth because we have had, we've had a reduction in claims, plus kept our premium down. And we've also seen a savings with the City Care Center, the Employee Health Clinic that we opened in two thousand and sixteen. We did include in the budget an increase of five percent in the city's share of the employee, I'm sorry, city's share of the premium to help cover the difference that we have in the fund between our revenues and expenditures. And there's an impact of the city budget there of two hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. This chart shows what's happened with our employee medical plan costs over the last ten years. You see, the first few years, there was essentially no growth, but then we've had quite a bit of spike the last two or three years. Hopefully, this time next year, when we look at what happened in FY eighteen, it'll be a flat number compared to FY seventeen. Summarizing, looking at personnel expenditures, and again, this chart is in your budget binder, compares all funds in the general fund. On the general fund side, about sixty-one percent of the expenditures is for public safety, police, and fire. And then Parks and Recreation Public Works account for twenty-two point two percent. The item up in the corner that says category name, that's the CERS unfunded liability. So that's showing up in our pie chart this year. And summary, we're recommending the full-time COLA of two point one percent, plus the average step increase of one point two seven percent. Part-time seasonal employees get an average two point one four percent COLA, twenty-five cent hour increase, plus fifteen cents an hour step. CERS rates are up twelve percent, plus we have the impact of the unfunded liability. And we're recommending fourteen new positions, eleven of which are sworn public safety positions. Any questions on personnel before we move into the capital budget?
Thank you. Keep going.
Capital budget, and again, you've got quite a bit of description in the budget book that provides a list of all of the proposed capital projects, costs, where's the source of revenue, and then also a brief narrative about all of the projects. This chart provides a comparison of the last number of years. We've included two thousand and seven and two thousand and ten fiscal years just to kind of show the best and the worst that we had in the past, and then compare it to present day. Two thousand and seven, back when the economy was good, we had a capital budget of over thirty-three million dollars. It dropped to fifteen million dollars three years later during the recession, and we had a zero general fund budget in two thousand and ten. And you can see the debt was eighty percent of our CIP that year. It was a pretty sad capital budget that year. But we've had steady growth since then. And also, this coming year, we'll have the best year as far as how much money general fund is putting into the capital budget. And you'll also see that the debt now represents less than forty percent of the capital budget. When we prepare the capital budget, we also look at strategic goals that the City Commission has set. And so we divide, kind of divide the capital budget out according to those, just to see how much we're spending in each category. So in this particular example, traffic and roads, over thirty-five percent of the capital budget will be for traffic and roads. That's six point three million dollars. As comparison to the fiscal year we're ending, the capital budget was four point eight million. So we're going from four point eight to six point three with traffic and roads. Community livability, which is a lot of parks, projects, plus sidewalks in stormwater, will be three point six million dollars, or just over twenty percent. This past year, that figure was two point nine million. So we're going from two point nine to three point six million. Then we have technology improvements, which is one point two million, and our municipal facilities and equipment will be six point six million. And we have all the projects listed here, but I won't necessarily go through every single one. But again, you've got description in your, in the budget book. There is a description in the public budget book, if anyone wants any further details. Looking at community livability, again... Looking at community livability, again, to $3.6 million devoted in this coming budget to that, which is up 25% over this, this last year. Sidewalks, again, $600,000, $500,000 of city money. We, we will have constructed over 15 miles of sidewalks since we started this program in 2008. Stormwater mitigation, again, a half a million dollars of local tax dollars devoted to that. We will have allocated almost $5 million for stormwater mitigation since the May 2010 Community livability, again, Parks and Recreation, almost $1.8 million. This includes renovation of the skate park, an inclusive playground at Roland Bland that will have features for individuals with special needs. That's next to our community centers, camps such as Camp Happy Days, special populations, and also special Olympics participants would have the opportunity to use that facility. Fitness playground, as an outdoor fitness trail at Preston Miller with stations along the asphalt trail. Those might be such items as a ski walker, a sit up board, stretch, and strength bars. And then also improvements at Kariakis, mainly the field lights, moving the field fence back to 225 feet so that we're compliant with Little League and also steel light poles. Continue on with Parks and Rec, refurbishing the courts at Parker Bennett, installing a shelter at the loops at Lover's Lane, doing a connector underneath the bridge at River Street, quarter million dollars, that will also include some safety railing and fencing. And they will also, long term, would like to build a mausoleum at Fairview Cemetery that would pay for itself, and so the first step, first step would be to design the mausoleum. I'm not sure what that has to do with community livability, but that's where we put it.
It's got to go somewhere.
It's non-livability.
It'll be very attractive. And then finally, the Bowling Green reinvestment area, neighborhood improvement program, over $700,000, 200,000 of which would be city funds. Our first project area was Chestnut to bypass Fairview to 14th. We spent over a million dollars there. Our latest neighborhood is a three-year project totaling over $2 million, and that's the Old Baron River Road to Old Morgantown Road, west of Normal View to the city limits. Planned projects there are new housing opportunities, exterior housing rehab, parks and streets improvements, and also new sidewalks. Moving on to improve traffic flow, $6.3 million, again, devoted in this budget, which is up 32% over this past year. Again, $2 million for street resurfacing, half of which would be city tax dollars. We expect to be able to do about 23 miles of roadway. Continuing the small house road improvements, $1.2 million in this next year's budget. Phase one was 3.3 million to get us from Campbell Lane to Highland Way. Phase two is estimated to cost $2.5 million to get us to Highland. Year three funding is to complete property acquisition utilities and start construction. Katie calculated that by the time we're all done, we've got another small house road project listed on here, but by the time we're all done with, with what we've done so far or proposed so far, we'll have spent $7 million on Small House Road from Cave Mill to Highland.
Ridgecrest.
Ridgecrest. Again, an additional small project on Small House Road on the south side, extending turn lanes at Campbell Lane to help traffic moving toward downtown. We're proposing to spend over a million dollars on Shive Lane to widen it from Scottsville Road to Kenbale, and then also put in a roundabout at Kenbale. This is in combination with work the plan is, the state is planning at Scottsville Road and Shive Lane. Another road project would be at the Dishman Lane Industrial Drive intersection to put in traffic signals and also a right turn lane at the southbound approach to Dishman. More neighborhood, localized neighborhood, traffic flow improvements, $275,000 for work at Parkside Cove and Cove Woodway North Sunrise. Of course, the downtown improvements program, phase one, year two, almost $1.3 million to improve the pedestrian walkways, improve, take care of deteriorating infrastructure, work on streets, sideways, sidewalks, alleys, work on the connection between our two parks Moving on to technology, $1.2 million, $870,000 of which would be in our information technology department, replacing switches, our surveillance cameras throughout the city, replacing servers, replacing our storage area network, that's a high-speed network, storage devices, and also an upgrade to our, our guest wireless network controller to provide better wireless access for people visiting city facilities. And then we also have other improvements relating to technology, the traffic signalization switch upgrade to allow Public Works to remotely access the traffic signals that the city has control over. Katie mentioned police scene reconstruction equipment upgrade. This is new technology that will allow crime scene processors at the police department to be able to use laser, lasers that digitally create diagrams, animations, they'll be able to do in just a few minutes what it takes hours for personnel to do now, and will provide much better representations that can be used in court. And then also, there's a $200,000 Storm Sisters, Storm Systems Sewer, whatever, mapping project, something we have to do according to the feds and the state, that we've got to map everything that has anything to do with stormwater. Moving on to facilities and equipment, $6.6 million, of which 1.8 million is new, new vehicles or equipment, moving equipment, $644,000 for police for new vehicles, mobile radio replacement, second year, which is most of the radios. We've got one, finance has one vehicle, a 2004 Taurus that's used for business license inspections, we would be replacing that vehicle. Fire department, 338,000 for a variety of things, replacing some vehicles, the second year of replacing extrication equipment that's on their rescue vehicles, breathing air compressor repair, they have equipment that fills their self-contained breathing apparatus bottles, we need to replace that equipment. Moving on to public works, $385,000 includes that snow truck that was mentioned earlier, that we've got a motor grader and three large mowers to be replaced. Parks and Recreation, one dump truck that's used for trash pickup, all the rest of its mowers and other working type equipment, some new equipment for the soccer complex. And then we have a quarter million dollars budgeted for replacing the golf carts at Crosswinds, which we would be using the Heartland Tax District revenues for that. The old carts, of course, would be kept to use at Paul Walker. Other facility improvements, we've mentioned the fire, for the fire department, building the Lover's Lane Fire Station, again, up fronting the construction costs using general fund money, and then eventually the Fire Improvement Fund replacing it, putting in new security systems at all of our fire stations to prevent general people from just being able to walk into the building through an open bay door. Also buying gear, turnout gear dryers for each of the fire stations. And then one other item is for employee's safety is to look at and replace the vehicle exhaust system at Greenwood Fire Station. For the police department, $750,000 for a 7,500, 7,500, 7,500 square foot bulk evidence storage facility, which would store up to 10 vehicles so we can secure the evidence And various other items include replacing the roof at Public Works Administration, one of the outer buildings at Public Works Operations, upgrading our HBAC controls, program controls in some of our buildings, a new emergency, well, an emergency generator for NCS, they do not have one now. And then also improvements at the River Walk, the rock wall there is deteriorating, so we need to replace it, and also a generator replacement and some additional replacement tables for the convention center. This chart shows the overall history for the capital budget over the last 10 years. You can see that the capital budget's essentially doubled, that debt has dropped slightly, and that general fund has gone from zero in 2010 to 10.7 million dollars in the proposed budget. In summary, thank goodness, we're proposing almost $30 million for the capital budget, which is about the same as last year. As mentioned, no general fund balance will be used for the fifth year, we're not recommending any debt. 30% of the total debt will be reimbursed by Western or Warren County. The ratio of new projects to debt is 60 to 40, that's the best it's been since fiscal year 2008, and we're providing over $6 million of road projects. We're continuing to, 1.7 million improvements to parks and related facilities, again, the new fire station, and addressing several area, key areas of resident and employee's Again, continue with the priorities that the city commission has established in the past, using local tax dollars to supplement paving and other road projects. Again, continuing to replace vital technology, equipment, and also make technology enhancements and facility improvements, and continue to set aside money for future projects so that we don't have to borrow. Any questions on any of that? Okay. We'll then turn it back to Katie, and she will cover agency funding.
Regarding to agency funding, the majority of the increase is related to additional transit funding, most of which you just approved earlier this evening for $75,320. The total amount, though, recommended for FY18 is an addition, or I'm sorry, for FY19 is an additional $87,855. Again, that's the $75,320 you just approved tonight for fiscal year 18, which is an amendment to the 18 number, and then an additional about $12,000 more dollars for them next year. The remaining increase of about $16,175 is for an up to 3% increase proposed for three other agencies, which requested more funding for the next year, and represents about a 2% increase. Agency funding was significantly reduced between FY2009 and fiscal year 2016, as reflected on this graph above. In the past two years, transit funding is the contributing factor for the notable rise. We provided some additional funding for Lover's Lane Route, that was about $80,000 in fiscal year 17, which, we actually approved that in fiscal year, I think, 15 or 16, but it wasn't actually used until 17, so it didn't appear in the budget at that point until later on. Again, adjusting. For today's approval of the additional fiscal year 18 funding for transit services, agencies requested an additional $52,850 and more funding for fiscal year 19. This recommendation is to provide only about $28,000 of that increase, which is only about half of it, 54% of the amount, and you can see the recommendation column there on the chart above. Ultimately, the Board of Commissioners makes the final decision when it comes to agency funding. This is a recommendation from the City Manager's Office, the budget team, as we put the budget together. We do believe it is a fair representation of what we can afford to do and covers our specific needs and services when it comes to the agency funding process. There will be a separate action by the board to approve the agency appropriations at the second meeting in June, when we finalize the budget process at that point. So thus far, the four agencies that would receive an increase over the previous year would be the Transit Program, again, you've already previously approved a portion of that funding tonight, the Hobson House Commission with a 3% increase, the Human Rights Commission with only a six, I'm sorry, a $500 increase, and then the Planning Commission requested additional funding, $14,000, it's a 3% increase, and that is to cover the new comprehensive development review process, they'll be adding an additional person, they've requested an equal amount, $14,000 from the county as well. So those two amounts together is what they need to cover for that additional process, and you approve first reading of that, those ordinance changes in the zoning ordinance tonight as well. Any questions so far about agency funding?
Ben Lee?
Yes.
Good thing.
Well, I was, I was going to bring up the, I'll just go ahead and mention it so y'all can start thinking about it, the, the other organizations, the county and city of Bowling Green, Warren County split most of that cost, the four little cities, at $1,200 apiece, which I think covers one meeting per month for their four votes, but that's 0.003% of the actual cost of their operating budget. And those four little cities represent 2,000 people, whereas if you split the city and the county half, we're operating at about 62.5 apiece. So they represent 33% of the votes and contribute practically nothing, you know, $4,800. And I think, I think the representation is outsized in a one man, one vote world, you know, they represent 33% of the votes. I was, I mentioned to Ben that I was going to bring that up tonight, I'm surprised he left, so just have that in your mind, I'll be bringing that up again, so, thank you. Go ahead.
A few other additional items which go along with agency funding. We do a dollar-for-dollar match of employee pledges to United Way, and the amount is $14,363, it's a very small increase over the previous year. The providing up to $10,000 for expansion upgrade of the outdoor warning system within the city limits. This is for emergency management to access some additional funding. Again, it's only to be used within the city limits to expand the cows, the warning system that we have. $50,000 for the second year of a two-year agreement to provide funds for capital maintenance expenses at the historic Ellen and Depot. This is a shared cost with Warren County. You had approved a municipal order mid-year this fiscal year for $50,000, and the county was also providing 50,000. This is the second year, we put in the budget for next year for $50,000, and the county, again, will provide 50,000. So for the two-year period, 200,000 total, 100,000 from the city and 100,000 from the county. The board has already approved that municipal order, so we put it in the budget to reflect that.
That will be the end of their appropriations, is that property will transfer to them at the end of the debt?
I believe that is the goal, yes. And also, since there is currently over $43,000 available from past budget years for capital improvements at the airport, we do not propose to add any additional funds for that purpose in next year's budget. We would simply carry forward whatever the balance is at the end of this year into next year and have it available. And if we spend between now and June 30th this $43,000, then we'll use contingency funds to cover any difference for next year. We, we don't get very many of these requests on an annual basis, they have projects proposed. Generally, we're matching federal and state FA, and FAA funding, and so it's not usually a lot of money at one time, but we've just been kind of holding these funds for this purpose, we'll continue to do that moving forward. Total agency funding represents 2.1% of the general fund expenditures, this is slightly up, it was 2% in the last several years, but it's 2.1% this coming year. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Laura Harris for all the graphics that were used in the budget presentation as well as in the budget summary document. I picked the color scheme and she puts everything else together. And then also Erin Ballou, I'd like to provide a special thank you to her for all of her assistance in the preparation of the budget document that you have in front of you, and then also the budget presentation. She is the individual that pretty much takes care of all the charts and graphs, makes sure the numbers all match up, and Sean also helps with the revenue side, but Erin does the majority of that work, and I just kind of, kind of proof what she's done and oversee some of that process. So we now conclude our budget presentation. We're prepared to answer any additional questions you may have. We also have some department heads here, if there's any questions specific to the department that I'm not able to answer, or anyone else on the budget team is not able to answer. Any more questions?
Questions for staff and their pres-
Great presentation.
Very thorough, very thorough, we appreciate it. I know a lot of hard work went into it.
We tried to really hit everything we could hit. We did not approve every single request that was submitted. that was submitted from the departments. We definitely, you know, have to make them sweat a little bit for what they do get. But we didn't approve everything. We couldn't. We couldn't afford to approve everything that they asked for. But we tried to work in everything that we could. We wanted to make sure that we could at least set aside some funds for a future level-dollar amortization payment on that unfunded liability. We also want to make sure we could cover the fire station construction project without having to issue any new debt at this point because obviously we have some future fire station needs as well in some other areas. So we wanted to try and address as much as we could now with that proposal. If you don't have any other additional comments or questions, basically, what we'll do next is we'll finish out the budget process. We'll get the rest of the documents together and submit those for the budget ordinance to have a first reading at your June 5 meeting, which is the next board meeting, and second reading at the June 19 meeting. There's also several other documents, ordinances that we have to bring forth that are part of the budget process. We have amendments to the classification pay schedule ordinance. So that'll come forth. We'll have agency appropriations to come forth. There's just some various other elements that we'll get prepared and ready for the next two board meetings that we have.
No other questions? We'll take, is that the end of it?
That's the end of it.
Anything else, Mr. Mizel? Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. And anybody that's interested in making public comments, make sure you sign the sheet in the back, and we'll call you up here shortly. Thank you.